Orders to revise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Superintendent, will please call the roll of the regular school committee meeting of December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two?
Ms. Chisholm?
Here.
Ms. Cormier?
Present.
Ms. Crowley?
Present.
Mr. Kissel?
Here.
Mr. Lipsa?
Here.
Mr. Morenne?
Present.
Dr. Wells?
Here. I have a motion to suspend the regular order of business and move the executive session to the back end of the meeting. We're not going to have the level three grievance, but we will have a contract negotiation update. Have a motion to that effect?
Some of.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the approval of minutes, ten twenty-four, twenty-two. Have a motion.
Motion approved?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, comments on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Eleven fifteen, twenty-two minutes.
Motion approved.
Have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any more questions or comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Anybody like to speak in public tonight? Not seeing anyone, we'll move on. I see we have a student representative, but it's not Sophia tonight.
She's six sadly.
Yeah, hi.
Hey.
Want to give you a report?
Yeah. Upcoming events at the high school is that we have a senior dance for the senior class this Friday. Another event that's happening is the Winterfest at the high school itself from five-thirty to eight-thirty in the auditorium on Sunday. And the following day on Monday, the twentieth, high school report cards go out. Progress reports, not report cards. My apologies. And then on that Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, we have a half-day and that'll lead us into Christmas break. And we get back on Christmas break on January third, which is the, which is the new Congress takes over, but that's irrelevant. Announcements, Ms. Keenan will be, Ms. Keenan will be taking close to a hundred students from the DECA club to participate in the DECA competition at the Royal Plaza and Hotel Trade Center in Marlborough on the fifteenth. Woburn, the administration at Woburn High School is wishing, is wishing all students who are participating the best of luck. At Winterfest, the marching band, concert band, chorus, and a cappella corps will be putting everything they have learned on display at Winterfest this Monday. Mr. Gilberti cordially invites all school committee members to attend. Doors open at five-thirty. The play that you guys might have heard was very successful. From Mr. Thomas and his supporting staff have experienced a slight dip in our theater students from last year compared to this year. Twenty highly-involved seniors graduated, but over fifty students were in the cast and crew of Anastasia. We continue to raise our expectations for quality and commit to better community outreach. In November, we had a successful nine-school tour of Woburn, performing two scenes from Anastasia at each school. This resulted in a palpable buzz in the community and ultimately we sold one thousand three hundred tickets over three performances. From elementary and middle schools up to the high school level, people in the city of Woburn are getting excited about theater. I believe that with each new production, myself and my production team of Woburn District faculty and trained students have raised the bar of quality and of enthusiasm in the wider community. Our students have two large-scale productions post-COVID by the end of the year. Another first for Woburn Memorial High School. We received very enthusiastic feedback on social media, in person, and from too many appreciative patrons to count. Thank you all for your continued support and we look forward to seeing you all at Winterfest. Sincerely, Ms. Tifo and Mr. Thomas. Moving on to the Embrace Club. The Woburn Memorial High School Embrace Club has been busy this month. On December fourth, student leaders and other club members shared their stories about holidays that they celebrate at the Know Your Neighbor Woburn event. Over a hundred people were in attendance and many elected officials and community members reached out to the club advisor, Ms. Amy Cardoso, afterwards to comment on how articulate and intelligent the students were in educating the public about holiday traditions from various and different cultures. The Embrace Club, the Embrace Club members also wrote out two hundred holiday cards to all Woburn Memorial High School faculty, faculty members to thank them, to thank them for their hard work and to spread some holiday cheer. Last Saturday's vigil of remembrance and hope for victims and survivors of violence was the third annual one in which Embrace has participated. And this year, because Arlene Mira King was the keynote speaker. Ms. Lauren Bakari and some of the Mira team, formerly called the Gating Violence Task Force Team, or DVTT for short, were in attendance as well. It was a great showing of Woburn Memorial High School students for a worthy cause. The lead organizers were very impressed with how willing the Embrace Club members were to help, acting as greeters, passing out programs, dimming the lights at the right time, reading the names of the Sandy Hook victims from the altar, and their great behavior in the audience, quietly paying attention and not using phones. Woburn Memorial High School Embrace will work with the organizing team again in the spring to attend Woburn's annual gun violence awareness and prevention proclamation at City Hall in early June. In terms of sports, the boys hockey team plays Melrose tonight away for their first game of their season. Also tonight, the girls hockey team plays their season opener against Melrose away at the Flynn Rink, which is located in Medford. Additionally, the boys basketball team lost with a valiant effort also against Melrose last night. On the girl's side, they had their home opener, which they won against Melrose. The girls' basketball team plays again on Thursday at Reading.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? I want to thank, I want to congratulate you on your power of observation. I've heard that you recognize the facial similarities between myself and my sister, and went up to her and asked her if she was related to me. Good job with those powers of observation. Thank you.
Did she acknowledge it?
Yes, she did. She did. And they had a good discussion about the school committee and I want to make clear, Mr. Morenne is the senior member, Pat's the next senior member. Thank you very much. See you next time.
No problem. Have a safe and happy holidays.
You too.
All right. Next up is the reports and presentation to the superintendent and staff.
Sure. We have a longstanding relationship with the Woburn Community Ed Foundation, so Maureen Willis, Executive Director, is here. We had a presentation of a check and an opportunity for Ms. Willis to come and share the ongoing partnership with the schools and the Ed Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. I know you have a busy agenda. We appreciate the opportunity to come out in front of the school committee to talk about our work in the public schools. I handed out the members' just calendar of activities that we have planned for this year. Our educator grant program is currently open. We've already received a few grants in from Woburn educators. The budget for this year's educator grants program is twenty-five thousand dollars to be awarded in grants of up to one thousand dollars for any project at any school that cannot be funded by the school budget. This year, we also are opening a second grants program that won't open until after the educator grants program is closed, but this grant program, the second grant program will cover professional development for educators that are seeking to attend training or professional development during out-of-school time. We're doing this because every year we get a phone call or two from educators that say, "I want to take a class over the summer, will the Ed Foundation help pay for it?" And we never had a program that would help them pay for it, so we thought we would pilot one this year to gauge the interests of the educators. So that will open in January, stay open until April. The budget for that is a five thousand dollar total. We're going to award those grants up to five hundred dollars for any educator who is seeking for professional development during out-of-school time. So those are our two formal grants programs this year. We continue to fund the Lexia program in the Woburn Public Schools through our partnership with the Cummings Foundation. That is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar grant that was awarded in 2021 that is paid out twenty thousand dollars a year. It focuses on kindergarten through grade three to make sure that those students are reading by grade level, by grade four. And this year, we are extremely excited to be bringing a new program to the district's middle schools through our partnership with Winning Home. The check is here and it says twenty thousand. The grant award is actually a sixty thousand dollar grant. Winning Home has funded the Ed Foundation and, as it passed through, the Woburn Public Schools for the Caring School Community Program for the middle schools. And this program came about because we were approached by Winning Home. They were interested in funding a multi-year grant with the Ed Foundation. So we sat down, we, with Matt Crowley's team, we met with Maureen Ryan and Courtney Young, and the Ed Foundation Board was very adamant that we wanted to serve middle school youth. We feel that the educator grants program is a little bit difficult for middle school educators to apply to. Their student population is bigger and different. Sometimes the projects don't quite fit. And we just feel that it was a population that we weren't serving the way we wanted to. And Courtney and Maureen came up with a few different options for the Ed Foundation to think about, and everyone got really excited about Caring School Community, and we wrote the grant and submitted it to Winning Home. For those of you who aren't aware, Caring School Community is a comprehensive, research-based, social and emotional learning program that builds school-wide community, develops students' social skills, and enables a transformative stance on discipline. Caring School Community promotes positive behavior through direct teaching of responsibility, empathy, and cooperation, creating settings where students feel heard, known, and cared for. And frankly, we couldn't think of a more worthy student population to bring this program to than the middle school students in Woburn, so we're very excited about it. Bob McGuire is here this evening. He is a member of the Ed Foundation's founding board. He stepped off earlier this year, earlier twenty-twenty-two. He is the Chair of the Winning Home Foundation Board, and his support of the Ed Foundation and of this program was really instrumental in helping us get it funded, so we're very excited about it. So, thank you. So this year, we're anticipating a total investment in the schools to be about seventy thousand dollars. We have a number of fundraising activities planned to round out the year, including our winter raffle, which opens later in January. That is an online event, for those of you who aren't aware. It features designer purses and restaurant gift certificates and other things from local, locally-owned businesses. We have a new event coming up later in the spring. It's the Gourmet Gala. It is a multi-course dinner that's being specially curated for us by Woburn Country Club with wine pairings provided by Dion Liquors, and we're going to do a small silent and live auction. And then we'll round out the school year with our Woburn's Awesome Teacher Tribute. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the Woburn Hall of Fame is another program that we've been very proud to bring to the Woburn community. That program is on hiatus this year. It will, it's moving forward the way it was originally planned to be an every-other-year program. So the Ed Foundation will run the Gourmet Gala on the years that we're not running the Hall of Fame. So the next Hall of Fame event is planned for the spring of 2024. The nomination forms are already on our website. We're already getting nominations in for the next class of inductees, so we're looking forward already to a great event. So, and I think in closing, I wanted to mention that when we started this foundation in 2014, we set ourselves a lofty goal of raising a million dollars for our schools over the course of ten years. And when I was sitting down this morning to write my notes, I kind of realized that we're going to, we're going to do it, right? We're, we're going to hit six hundred thousand dollars this year. We'll be ten years old in 2024. So it's been, you know, tremendously rewarding, successful experience for all of us that's been involved in it. And I can tell you that the members of our founding board, as their tenure with the Ed Foundation is coming to an end, because they did self-impose term limits on themselves when we set up this foundation, they're actively working to bring on new people that are going to share our interest in supporting the schools and especially their commitment to the continued growth and success of the Ed Foundation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions from the committee?
I mean, I'm just really blown away. This is a great update. It's a tremendous organization. I'm so deeply grateful for the Caring School Community Grant. It's the first I'm hearing about it. I'm just so excited, just amazing. And to really give that kind attention to the middle schools. And it's right in line with our work, with the district's work on restorative justice. I'm just really deeply grateful of all the work that you do and the impact that you have on the public schools. And I'm so proud that you reached your goal of a million dollars.
We will. Yeah, it's exciting, isn't it? When you stop and think about it, it's like, wow. When we first sat out and we said, "We're going to raise a million dollars in ten years," well, people said to me, a lot of times out of the gate, you know, "They've tried it, it hasn't worked." People tried it before, it didn't work. We heard it with the Hall of Fame, didn't work, I will say, because I can say this. Maybe you didn't have the right women at the table. But, but again, it's very exciting and it's definitely been, I mean, you know, anyone who's been involved with the Ed Foundation, from a volunteer to a board member, knows that the commitment of our board has just been amazing. And even at a recent meeting, the Chair of our Board Development Committee said, "It's been the best board he's ever sat on. It's been a pure pleasure to, you know, start this organization and bring it to where we have it." It's just been tremendously exciting and rewarding, and a lot of it is because of our success, but our success is because of the, the interest and the excitement that we're able to get back from the schools, whether it be the educator grant proposals that we get in, when you tell people the things that we're funding. I mean, we don't make this stuff up. This comes from the educators. The same thing with caring schools' communities. Like, we never would have come up with this, but the school department told us that, you know, this is, this is what we think our kids need. So I think that it's, you know, we're proud about the money that we've raised and the investments that we've made, but I think we're very proud, and it was very reflective in the Hall of Fame, that we're really raising pride in the community. And people are getting excited about things that are happening in the schools, and that, to me, that's a win for all of us, right?
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, that your organization, and particularly Maureen, the work that you've done personally as a human, has like helped to shift the culture in Woburn itself, that we're focusing on education, we're excited about education, and there's just an extra layer of, you know, things that we can do for kids. And you've just made a deep impact on the city, and you should feel extremely proud of yourself.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
All set? Mr. Morenne?
Thank you. Good, Maureen, you mentioned a couple of your board members are giving up.
I brought the list.
I know, I brought the list. Can I just plug those folks if you would?
I will. So as you may know, Colleen Cormier, who's also a school committee member, joined, is on our board. Joe Crowley is our longstanding board chair. Sue Ellen Holland, Chris Irving, Richard McGuire, Michael Martini, Rick Metters, Joanne Malkarin, Donald Kleenin, Eric Skeffington, Brian Tagg, Nancy Whalen, and Maria Zacho. And I was, like I said, every, almost every member of the board that came together in the fall of 2013 to start forming this organization as a member, as a founding board member, is still with us. And they're going to complete their terms in the next few years, so.
Thank you for all you do and all your members.
Oh, thank you, Michael.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, questions? I think maybe the superintendent?
Yeah, just on behalf of the school department and an honorary board member, I have the privilege of attending the meetings. They are incredibly efficient meetings and, but it's really a high-functioning board. The school department is incredibly grateful. I think what Ms. Crowley said resonates. Your work, Maureen, you, is impactful to the school department in ways that generations of kids are going to be the beneficiaries of. So thank you and the entire board for your, your time.
Great, thank you.
And on behalf of the committee, I want to thank you for coming here and enlightening us on the activities you've got going, and thank you for all the support.
Great, thank you. Happy holidays.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen.
She's taking the check with her. Next item?
Next item, we have an update from Curriculum Coordinator Kim Gustenhoven, who's with us tonight. Kim has been serving in this role for, I believe this is your fourth year in this role, and there's been a lot of excitement in and around the Science Department, pre-K to twelve, but Kim's role is really six-twelve, and that's where she's going to focus her attention tonight.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I'm so excited to give you all the information about the Science Department's middle school and high school have been doing this year and.
So, I'm just going to ask you to sit there, because that's where the mic, you can stand there if you like. But that way the audience at home can hear. I know, you're in teacher mode.
I know. I'm just in teacher mode. I'm sorry. We're in teacher mode. So I wanted to start off, in 2019, at the end of 2019, we received the Innovation Pathway Designation, which is a program run with the governor for college and career readiness out of high school. And in 2020, we started raising funds to fund the two pathways. We have two pathways at the high school. One is in biotechnology and one is in advanced manufacturing. So I wanted to bring you up to date on where we've gone with our money-raising campaign. So we've received a number of grants. We've been really fortunate to have received a number, and it started, it started out small. We had planning grants, implementation grants, those were at thirty thousand each. We received a Project Lead the Way engineering grant and also a biomedical grant from Project Lead the Way, and those totaled eighty-five thousand dollars. And, can you, thank you. And it continues. Then we were lucky enough to receive a Cummings Foundation grant for a hundred thousand dollars and a Skills Capital grant for a hundred thousand dollars. We went on, the two gateway grants that are listed here are middle school grants with the Project Lead the Way programming. Our purpose in that is to create vertical alignment between the programming and the education that kids receive in middle school so that they will be prepared for high school and some of the advantages they'll have there. And then we also were lucky enough to get another Skills Capital grant for seventy-five thousand. So all of these grants have gone to the purchasing of equipment for a biotech lab, training teachers, they've gone to programming over the summer, and they've gone to programming throughout the school year. They have to be certified to teach the Project Lead the Way curriculum, so it's a lot of hours for them, extra for them to attend. And we've been really fortunate to have staff that has been more than willing to work with us on all these projects. Next slide. So this past March, we received the Mass Life Science Center grant for two-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars to also support these two pathways. We received another Skills Capital grant, and we became part of the PBL Works program, which is project-based learning, that's what it's short for. We are part of the second cohort in the state of Massachusetts that are training teachers to teach using project-based learning, which is more hands-on learning, real-world, problem-solving, higher-order-thinking style of learning. Next one. So these are the ones we just got within the last eight months. A support grant for forty-one thousand, the Life Science Center for two-forty, Skills Capital, a third year of Skills Capital at a hundred and fifty thousand. And we just got a week ago, a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education to provide our summer program in manufacturing. So we have now broken the million-dollar ceiling in three years, so we're really pleased with that. And I want to thank my buddies here in the administration building, Patty, who I call, Patty McKinnon, who I call the queen of grant management, because she does a lot of paperwork with me, and Debbie, who's my PO princess, because she does all the purchase ordering and makes sure the companies that we've bought equipment from are paid in a timely fashion, and I couldn't have done it without them, so I really appreciate them helping me out in the last couple of years. So just a few details about the Innovation Pathway in biotechnology. We are in the process of converting a bookroom on the fourth floor in the Science Wing into a biotech lab. In fact, they just called me this afternoon, and some lovely equipment is being delivered on Friday. I hope they're ready. We've, Donna Wisbowski is the teacher that teaches biotechnology. Previously, she worked in the field of biotechnology, so she is gung-ho and gives a lot of her time to the curriculum and her students, and creating an atmosphere that's equivalent to what you would find in a college lab. So the, because we have all the grant funding, we are putting in what we call CO2 biosafety cabinets, look more like what we would call a hood in the old days, where you work under the glass with your hands, kind of thing. We bought, we purchased two of those, and they're CO2-controlled because the students are going to be able to work with animal cells in addition to bacterial cells. We've bought the ultra-deep freeze like you would have for COVID vaccine, because to keep those cells viable for study throughout the year, we have to keep them frozen below a typical freezer temperature. And we also will have a new CO2 incubator, which helps us to grow the cells, and it controls just the temperature so it's even. You can't have it fluctuate. The bacteria is not as critical, but the animal cells require that. So they will be simulating what you would have in a clean room, the techniques they need to use for pipetting and protection gear, the whole, the whole nine yards. We're hoping to work with Mass Hire this spring to possibly offer some of those students internship opportunities with companies that are in biotech, the biotech field. It's awfully hard to get internships, but Mass Hire has now done a lot of outreach, so we're going to work with them on that. And we are seeking dual enrollment for the biotech course coming up soon. We're working on that. That's, that's a work in progress. So our advanced manufacturing, we're converting over our wood shop to an actual manufacturing environment or floor. We've purchased equipment there. We have augmented reality welding equipment, so students can learn how to weld, and the computer scores them and tells them how they did with different materials and different types of welds. We also bought what we call a MEC lab, so it is a setup that the student designs a widget, so to speak, and then it takes the student through the whole processing, the manufacturing process of that widget, and actually produces it with a 3D printer at the end of the line, so to speak. So we are training staff for that. We have. We have three Project Lead the Way courses in advanced manufacturing pathway, as well as three in the biotech pathway. And this past summer, we had our first summer program for advanced manufacturing. We had three students. They had to do 150 hours of class, and they received their OSHA-10 certification and their entry-level manufacturing certification. So, if they wish to continue and go into the job market when they graduate, that will clear their way, they won't have to take the entry-level training, they can move on in their training. Or if they go to college and they go into engineering or a subject like that, they would have a lot of the basic skills to go into engineering and manufacturing. So, Project Lead the Way, the really great part about this program that we are working with is that they provide, they provide college credit for the students in the courses. And so, we have, I have the stats down here on the bottom. For kids that were in the Principles of Biomedical Science, 93% of them received a college transcript from Rochester Institute of Technology this year, that they can transfer, it's on in our IT transcript, they can use it to whatever college they choose to attend, it will count as credit, it'll take three credits off of their cost of their own courses. If they took the whole pathway, they would have, at this point, nine college credits when they were done with the pathway. Our Human Body System course, 71% of the kids qualified for credit, and our engineering, we have two engineering courses, and 100% of those kids qualified for college credit. So, PLTW has, provides, again, it's, we're all focused on the project-based learning, their curriculum is designed that way, and they train the teachers. And we have purchased a lot of equipment for those courses, so that they have the hands-on experience. Like, in the human body systems, they do, they learn how to do phlebotomy, which you'd never normally would just have in your classroom experience. But we have the arms and the whole bit, so it's really great. And again, the equipment that they're using in these high school courses, we have purchased the 3D printers, the same printers are in the middle schools now, in the tech department, so that the students will actually learn how to use them between sixth and eighth grade, so when they come into engineering, they'll be good to go, they'll already know how to use the equipment. Also, this year, we started a lab assistant program. So, we had five students. This is what their lab coats look like. They got lab coats, and they help prepare the chemistry that's going to be used in the labs, the gels for DNA study, they set up all the laboratory settings according to what the teacher wants, they help clean up, they control the disposal methods, and they've been really very helpful, because science, it takes a lot of time to set up a lab. And because we only have four labs in the building, there's a lot of rotation, and this really helped for the teachers to have some time to breathe between the three minutes of classes. So, this is a great program, and, would you turn, these are the kids that, some of the kids that worked in the lab, they're in the prep room here, and here they're just posing, but you get to do that if you're doing all the grunt work. These are the kids that did our summer program. We all went out to lunch to celebrate. The Center for Manufacturing Technology is a family-owned company here in Woburn, and they are working with us on this program. They are willing to write recommendations for our students when they apply to school or job, following all this training. And it was, it was a great, great program for the kids, they really enjoyed it. So, I'm happy we were able to get the grant this year, because it is expensive. We paid for all the training, they went for free, and they will again this year, that next group. So, if you see advertising around for this summer program, it's happening, and it's One other thing we're doing is we have, this is our second year of a project we're doing with a high school in Italy, in Bologna, Italy. We were contacted by the Italian consulate in Boston, and they interviewed a number of schools, and we were selected to work with this science school in Italy. Their school systems are different, so they have like a science and math, strictly science and math high school. So, our advanced placement environmental science students work, we livestream, it took a little while to figure that out, but we livestream with the kids in Italy. Due to the six-hour time difference, we do it early in the morning, and they stay after school. This past year was the first time we did it, and we had four kids in the AP program that were taking Italian as well, and they were able to speak Italian to the Italian students, which was really fun for them to try out their skills. Of course, the Italian students speak fluent English, so we had no problem otherwise. And I have, Cinzia Gilberti is the Italian teacher, and Linda Marcus is the AP environmental teacher, that have supported this program, couldn't have done it without them. Cinzia is a great help, because when we had a little hiccup in our streaming, she got on the phone to Italy, and they could talk out what the problem was, and we were able to fix it. So, a great experience for the kids. We'll start again in January, they'll meet, the new group of kids will meet together, get to know about, they kind of introduce their schools, what their school system is like, and they have breakout sessions to talk to each other. Then, in February, we're actually going to do a game while we're streaming with them, an e-game. It's designed by the Italian National Research Council. And then, in March and April, we actually perform a lab and collect the data, and then we get on, stream with them and compare their results to ours, and because it's on our ecological footprint, we look to see the differences in recycling and other activities in Italy versus how we do it in the United States. It's kind of eye-opening when they realize how much they use plastic, and how much they use other materials that affect global warming. So, it's been a great project and fun, and I wanted everyone to know we were actually doing it. And this is the kids in the library, when we were in the process of streaming. This is our group of coordinators that are part of the project-based learning program. We went to Holy Cross to train, and now we've trained, our first group of teachers last June, we started a second group about a month ago, there'll be a third group trained this June, and our hope is, in the two-year period, we will have trained all the high school teachers at that point in time to do project-based learning. And we have had two projects, these projects are extensive, they can take more than a week to do, because the culmination of the project is that you present to an audience. So, you go through a critique prior to your presentation with experts in the field, and then, in the end, you present to an audience. So, they're getting a lot of practice and collaborative work, working with people that are professionals in the field, learning how to communicate and collaborate, as well as the actual topic of the project. So, we've had a couple, we've done one in math and one in chemistry so far this year with people that have trained in June. In the middle schools, we had STEM Week this year. Sixth grade does the lunar colony, and the seventh graders do kinetic sculpture, and it coincides with their curriculum that they're studying in science. So, the kids have a great time doing that. Lots of excitement. We did it for three days. They do marble runs, and study the kinetic energy and the potential energy before that marble goes down the run, and a lot of, a lot of fun events, which promotes the love of science. We did it in both middle schools, and the science teachers are the ones doing the work. So, we rearranged three days of scheduling, so that the kids can spend more time in the science classes to get all this work done. We're giving the Mass Insight mock AP exam. Mass Insight's a company that gives programming to schools to help improve AP test scores. So, they have Science Saturdays, where speakers from all over the state, and even out of state, come and work with the kids. And then, prior to the actual AP exam, they get to take a mock exam in their regular classroom, and it's graded by the AP College Board scorers, so they could see where they would fall. It's great for our teachers as well, if there's an area that, we see there's an area that they're not understanding a topic, then they can go back before the test and fix that situation. So, we have five advanced placement science classes, biology, chemistry, two in physics. Physics I is algebra-based, physics C is calculus-based, and environmental science. So, they, on these tests, they can also receive college credit. So, our exam scores from last year, you can see, the middle row is the Massachusetts State scores, ours are in the green, so overall, kids earn a score between one and five. Three, four, and five scores typically can have, receive college credit, depending on the school you go to. So, 41% of our kids scored in the threes, 32 in the fours, and 8% in the fives. Chemistry, we far exceeded Massachusetts in the threes, as well as in the fives. AP Physics, we have threes and fours. And AP Environmental, we had 17%, so we matched the state there, but we exceeded it in fours and 2% fives. So, I, the purpose of tonight for me was just to let you know how wonderful the science teachers are, and the departments are, and how hard they work. We offer a variety of courses at the high school to keep up with the changing, changes in society and science itself. From biotech, we offer forensic science. We have all the AP courses, we've got engineering, we have AutoCAD and drafting for kids that want to go into engineering, it's a great skill. If you take AutoCAD, you can go right into work with that. A lot of engineering companies just have someone that does AutoCAD strictly. And, one more. These are some other ones, we have earth science, astronomy, meteorology, anatomy and physiology, medical interventions, human health and sexuality, computer science, you name it, we've got it. I think they have a great menu to choose from, and some really great teachers, a lot of them are career changers, so they bring other perspectives to the table and into the classroom, which is nice. So, thank you, and thank them, and have a good holiday.
Okay. So, do we have any questions from the committee?
Okay, John, you have to know.
I do, but playing my role as chairperson, nobody. The AP exam, now, did our students last year, were they required to take it? I know we've gone through this, a couple of different variations.
Yeah, they are required to take it, and the school funds the cost of the test.
Yeah, okay. And then, how many of the students are taking, are all of the students taking advantage of that program, the pre-testing program for the AP courses, or is it voluntary?
All the AP, all the AP students will be taking the mock exam in all of the AP science courses.
Okay. Is that, is that starting this year, or is that last year, too?
We've done it, we didn't do it during COVID, because it
Right, yeah.
Took a break. But, yes, we have done it in the past, and it's nice for them to practice, because all these standardized-type tests are different, and it gives them a little preparation to enter into the real test.
Okay, thank you.
One real quick question. The labs that are being created, it sounds like it's in process, is there training for the staff and/or the students, you know, based on like OSHA and things like that, that if they're doing things that wouldn't normally happen in a classroom?
Right. Yes. The answer to that is yes. They will learn how to run the equipment, because that's part of what they would be doing in college, is operating that same equipment. So, they will be running it, it's in the process of arriving and being installed, so, and the safety precautions that they would need using that equipment as well.
Okay, excellent. Have we thought about the sustainability of the program? You know, I know a lot of it's coming from grants, but in the future, you know, things need to be replaced and so forth, so.
Yes, yes. The biggest cost is getting it in the door, because like the two cabinets that are coming, and the incubator, that's over $30,000 just to get by them.
But then, you need to do inspections every year, and then if there's, if something breaks down, you have to hire somebody. So, I think if we could just make sure that we're working on a budget to, you know, what's the anticipated cost going forward, so that we don't have these lovely things, and then find out we can't keep them going, so. We can talk about that budget time, but I just wanted to raise that question.
Anything else?
I just want to, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. And a million dollars in grants is unbelievable, and the opportunities then afforded to our kids, and to the teachers, to say thank you to them for learning new things and providing the opportunities to our kids. So, I say that, and then I'll just share, I was at the Museum of Science yesterday. I was asked to attend with a small group of superintendents, a meeting about the quote "future of work" with biotech. So, there was CEO-type people and superintendents, and we met at the Museum of Science yesterday, and I, we haven't seen each other, but I have a list of all these opportunities for our kids. But when I said I was from Woburn, they knew who you were.
Oh.
In a good way. And I really, I really think that I was asked to attend because of the work you're doing, so, so thank you, and you, we really appreciate it, and I'll follow up with you, because there's more, more coming.
Oh, good. We like that.
Thank you again. Thank you for coming. Okay, next up, you have the order.
Yep, so, the next presentation are the elementary school improvement plan. Kristin Maloney is going to tell me who's presenting the goals. Okay, so if you're, okay, so come on down. So, the, just, yeah, so let me just introduce the two, Judy Mera is the principal in her first year, doing an outstanding job at the Linsker Rumford Elementary School, and Linda Riley, Dr. Riley is the principal at the Alta Vesta Elementary School. So, it looks like we have North Woburn going first tonight, so.
Righty, so I get to start with goal one. Our goal one connects to goal, goal one of the strategic plan, which is focused on building tiered systems of support that are data-informed, culturally and linguistically supportive. So, when we think about tiered systems of support, our focus for this goal is really on that first tier of instruction. And first, tier one instruction is focused on grade-level standards, working with all students in the classroom, and really, we need to make sure that our tier one instruction is really what we would say tight, really meeting the needs of students, focused on the standards for students. So, for this particular goal, we're focusing on K-3 foundations, which is a program we've done in Woburn for a number of years. It's a literacy program focused on phonics instruction, and it is really, helps teachers to really target those phonics skills in the early years. So, what the principals are doing is we're using a combination of walkthroughs, meeting with our with our content specialists, our classroom teachers, so that we can make sure that that tier one instruction related to foundations is really strong instruction. We're measuring that through a couple of ways. There are end-of-unit assessments in foundations, and our DIBELS assessments, which is a reading assessment, which helps us to target how students are doing with phonics instruction. And so principals are looking at that, their content specialists, along with principals, are working and having regular data meetings, so that we can look at the data to see, okay, is the instruction we're doing, is it working? And so we're really focusing on that foundations program for this first goal. And we're meeting as a team, as a principal team, we're looking and doing these walkthroughs together, making sure that we're seeing the same things, because sometimes if we're working in silos, all in different schools, I might see one thing, and Dr. Riley might see a different thing. And so by meeting and doing walkthroughs and really looking at instruction together, we can then align what we're doing, so that we can better align tier one instruction across the district, which then actually works nicely with goal two.
Thank you. Okay, so, goal two is focusing on our professional practice as instructional leaders within our buildings. And again, it's, we're looking at building tiered systems of support. And what this one is, is ensuring all elementary educators utilize the newer curriculum, FONTS and PENNEL Classroom, scope and sequence, and to guide pacing and improve alignment between grade levels. This is our newly adopted literacy curriculum, and what we're doing to ascertain that we're going to achieve this goal is collaborating with not only our early adopters for the FPC, but lab classroom teachers, content specialists. And we're setting these district level, grade level agendas to ensure, we're facilitating discussion around the scope and sequence of this new curriculum, and ensure that the grade levels throughout the district are following that. And another, we're doing, we're reviewing this throughout the year, we're meeting these grade levels, and ensuring that everybody is on the same page, and if there's any questions that arise, as does often happen with newer curriculum, that the teachers are collaborating and helping one another, and they're elite teachers, and they're specialists, like I mentioned. And the principals are a part of this collaboration, which has been really exciting, as we're learning alongside, but in a different way, which then we can use what we're learning to kind of support the implementation of the direct and explicit instruction with this newer curriculum, which is, clearly, it's important to support our teachers, and one of the rollouts is that they're working on the interactive read-alouds and mini lessons. There are several components, being a literacy curriculum, there are several components, but we're focusing on it piecemeal, so that the teachers can get acclimated and really internalize what they're doing, and that kind of strengthens the instruction. And then, as principals, we're doing these observations in focusing mainly on times when there is literacy instruction happening in the classroom, and we're specifically looking at the certain components, like the read-alouds and the mini lessons. And some of the early adopters in lab classrooms are even taking it a step further with small group instruction, using structured literacy routine. The district is also really involved in supporting the principals, like even a step further with our work with collaborators like Melissa Orkin and Sarah Gannon. And, you know, the last piece of kind of like how we're gonna measure this, again, like with the foundations, where it's all about attaining early literacy skills. So we're using DIBELS, which is an indicator, a set of measures, to kind of indicate and assess the acquisition of these literacy skills. So, similar to the foundations goal, this is again, a tier, a robust tier one support, and then, and then that, if we have this, then our tier two will become smaller, hopefully, and tier three even smaller, hopefully.
All right. Let's see how we'll do this question. If anybody has any questions about the goal, we can do them, and then at the end, if anybody has any particular question about the school plan, then we'll go back. So, does anybody have any questions about the goals for this?
I just have a comment that it's a huge undertaking to implement a new curriculum, so I just want to take, thank you, and all the principals for taking leadership on that. That's amazing. And it's very, sounds very organized and systematic, and I think you're doing a great job.
Okay. All right. Next group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next two principals, Ms. Maloney's the principal at the Hurd Wyman, and Mr. Casares is the principal at the Goodyear Elementary School, presumably doing goal three and goal four.
Good evening, everyone. So I'll introduce our goal three, which involves our district's partnership with the CEED project, which is another acronym for Seeking Equity, Seeking Educational Equity and Diversity. So district administrators and school-based administrators are participating in these trainings over the course of twenty hours, and it's really a time and opportunity for us to reflect on our experiences, share with each other, and really get into discussions, it's very conversation-based, and share these thoughts with our facilitators and with each other, so that ultimately, we can take a look at our own interactions at the building level, I think our practices at the building level, and ultimately, our policies at the district level, to make sure that we are being equitable, that we are serving our community as our, the demographics of Woburn are evolving. And ultimately, I think it really involves us reflecting and going back to creating a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere in our schools, where families do feel that, not just through our words, but really through our actions and our daily routines.
Okay. And goal four, so just to note, you'll see at the beginning, at the top of each one of these goals, that there is a direct link to the strategic plan. So our goal four is around the elementary book study that we're doing for leading for literacy. And the rationale here is, in order to build the capacity in the tier one and tier two instruction in the classroom, that you heard a lot from Dr. Riley and Mrs. Mara about, we need to build our capacity as administrators too, and being instructional leaders, so that we're able to go into a literacy block and know what to be looking for, to be able to provide supportive feedback to teachers. So some steps that we've done so far are that we meet bi-weekly, we have some guiding questions and topics that we discuss as a group in relation to leading for literacy, and then we have partnered up. So this involves all of the elementary principals and assistant principals. So we've partnered up with another principal across the city, and we have visited each other's buildings to look at the structured literacy routine. And specifically, one of the components that we've adopted with FPC across the district this year is the interactive read-alouds, so that's what we've started with now. So this is in a cyclical nature, that we visit each other's schools, kind of debrief the two classrooms that we saw, and then we come together as a whole group and discuss our common observation tool, and the feedback that we're noticing across the district and what we can do. And so the next one we'll do, we have interactive read-alouds, and then we'll do the reading mini lessons, because those are the first two components in FPC that we have adopted. So what, some of the things that we're learning in the book are that, not so much about systems and structures alone, but practices for, you know, instructional practices in the structured reading routine that's going on in the classroom, in ways that we can use our content specialists in some of the positions that we have in the building, with our reading interventionists, to really make sure that we're grouping students appropriately, so we're getting the most bang for our book, buck, and that small group instruction reading.
All right. Any questions about these goals? Good, okay. Next up.
So, just as an introduction, probably not needing an introduction, Mr. Wayne Clark from the Shamrock Elementary School, and Mr. Rob Nickerson from the Malcolm White School. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Why don't you start? Here's his first one.
Thank you. Mr. Clark and I have an additional goal, because each of us has a, an after-school program in our respective schools. So, for me, we refer to ours as SALT program, Supporting Additional Learning Time, and it's funded through a Twenty First Century Learning Grant, so it's a, it's funded through the state, it's Woburn Public Schools, along with the Woburn Boys and Girls Club. And together, we're providing an opportunity for students from both the Malcolm White Elementary School, as well as the Goodyear, to have that additional learning time after school. So it's two hours a day, Mondays through Thursdays, and the students will come in, and they have homework help, we have focus on things, we, actually, we just had four of our teachers spend two days at trainings at Devon's, and they learned about novel engineering, two of them went and they took courses on that, a couple of the other ones took, it was, I can't remember the exact term for it, but essentially, it's writing and pick, it's picture-writing, there it is. So it's drawing pictures and turning it into writing, and then continuing and kind of looping it all together and building upon that. And it's a, it's a pretty excellent opportunity. So the kids, when they come in, have the chance to, as I said, work on homework, do some of that academic stuff, that's a little bit outside of the norm of what they could do on a regular school day, as well as have some social-emotional support, as we have an adjustment counselor available to us as well, and, you know, just that extra social time. So it's a, it's a pretty great opportunity. In terms of, you know, kind of seeing what the students need and collecting some of the data, there's a tool that's provided by the, by DESI, which is the SAEO, it's the, I don't want to get it wrong, Survey of Academic Youth Outcomes, and there is a teacher version for that, which is to say, a during-the-day classroom teacher. There's a during-the-program, which also happened to be teachers, but, you know, facilitator kind of a, a survey, as well as a student survey. Student surveys are for third, fourth, and fifth grade students. So we collect data from all three of those different parties, I guess, and see, and we can track student progress in all those different, those different ways, which leads to some interesting information that then also gets reported back to the state, and ultimately, we get access to data, not only from our program, but also from others, to kind of see how we're doing and judge it accordingly. And that runs through my program pretty well, right there.
So my program is a little different. We've had an amazing, oh, probably going on a close to twenty-year collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club. And the Boys and Girls Club is a vital part of what the Shamrock does when our day ends. So they actually apply and get the grant and work with us. And homework help is a big part. Our teachers identify students that they like in the program, and those kids get first crack at coming in, and it, it makes the world of difference there. We often will have parents come to us and say, homework is so hard, or there's no one at home to help with homework, and I, as the principal, get to slide that student into the program, provided there's room, which somehow there's always just a little bit of room. I don't know how they do it, but there's always room when a student needs to get in.
I think that's one of the mottos at the Boys and Girls Club.
It really is. Allison McDaniel is, is our director, she's amazing, her kids came through the Shamrock. She's vital, and she just makes it happen. Our, what, what really makes the program great is a lot of our paraprofessionals end their difficult school day, and then go to the cafeteria and work with these kids, and that makes all the difference. They know the kids, they've worked with them, they've known them, some of them since preschool. And so it is just an amazing program. I won't go into the SAEO, but we use the SAEO as well, so at the end of each year, DESI is analyzing that data, we're getting the data, all of our teachers, I have to thank them for doing those surveys and getting them back to us. And it clearly has a direct, amazing impact on our kids. And like I said, has, they are just a part of what the Shamrock is now, so. It's amazing. And a quick shout-out, it's, it's not necessarily a goal, but in part of that grant, we have our Before the Bell program. The Before the Bell program, kids at the high school take a course in health and wellness, physical education, and they come to Malcolm White, come to the Shamrock, and those kids lead our students in physical education activities each morning, and that is run through the Boys and Girls Club. So, again, they are, they are woven into the fabric of our schools, but we couldn't be more fortunate to have them working with us.
Okay, any questions?
Just a couple of questions, I think, an echo of one that I asked you both last year as well. What are, what are the current student enrollments in these programs?
So we are currently at forty students enrolled. I literally, an hour before I came here, had another email back and forth with a parent, we're trying to get enrolled as well. And we're pushing a little bit more for the, going into the new year, as schedules are changing and stuff like that, for, you know, different student availability.
Okay. And we're the same, we're thirty to forty. Our kids, we rotate K and one, we try not to have them on the same day when possible. They do homework days opposite, so they get a little extra attention when they're there, so. But yeah, we're between thirty and forty.
And what are the, are there limitations on, on total number that you, I mean, it sounds like, for you, Mr. Clark, that's somewhat theoretical, but, you know, are there, are there theoretical or real limitations on how many students?
Yeah, forty is really, we're getting up at the top, just based on the number of adults we have watching our kids, but, you know, we, we do fill up. We can't take an unlimited number of kids, but when a kid really needs that program, we find a way.
The, the grant is written for a maximum of fifty, but the, in a practical sense, very similar to Mr. Clark, you know, in order to have appropriate staffing, so that the students are getting what they need out of the program, forty to maybe forty-five would be tapping it out where we are staffing-wise right now.
And how is staffing right now?
Staffing now, staffing now is good.
That's the question I asked you last year, so.
Yes, staffing now is good. It has been difficult in the past. Right now, we are well, I won't go so far as to say fully staffed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Is that it for presentations, or do we have another set?
That's it.
That's it, okay. So open up to any particular questions, or questions about school plans that anybody has? Does anybody have any? My only overall question was, is I'm just, the impression of, you know, how our students are doing the post-COVID, and what you saw with your students, you know, coming back, you know, we've heard a lot of talk in the newspapers and things about, you know, the lack of learning that occurred because of COVID, and we just kind of want to get a feel from you out there on the front lines, how, how are we doing? How, what did you see, and how are we doing to make things better?
For the Shamrock, I can say, our, our current second and third grade students were definitely the most affected there, you know, kindergarten and first grade. There are no more important grades socially than kindergarten and academically than first grade, my opinion only, don't ask me to back that up with data, but that, those two grades are so important, and those are the kids that were affected by COVID, that, you know, either were at home for a third of the year, or, you know, were in the hybrid model. So you can't beat being in school for six hours a day, there's just no replacing that. So our teachers are working incredibly hard to close those gaps.
Okay. That's sort of, I guess, the general opinion of everybody in the audience.
Yeah, I would agree with second and third grade being probably the most negatively impacted. I think the, the social-emotional parts, we're starting to see, and I think especially, you know, this time of year, as we're approaching the holidays and the break, we're starting to see a lot more bubble up, perhaps even in places that you wouldn't have anticipated, students that normally get through the day very well, new stressors and new issues at home, or things that maybe wouldn't have been the case a few years ago, whatever it may be.
Yeah. And our incoming K kids, you know, they, they took longer to settle in, they're getting rolling now, we're seeing it, but, you know, they didn't get out to preschool.
Right.
So, really, big, big impacts.
Mm-hmm. All right. Mr. Chisholm?
Just, I know budgets in the process, and I'm still, I was just meeting with you guys, and you submitted all your budgets, is there anything that is going to be a surprise to any of us, inside of maybe enrollment or staffing, or do you see anything that, at the elementary level, is kind of a beacon out there that you're gonna be needing?
Nothing comes to mind specifically.
No, there won't, no surprises. I mean, our, our goal is to absolutely maintain what we've been able to put together lately. We've had some great intervention support, and we need to build on that, because these are the people who are making the difference. So I mean, we, you know, we can't put two teachers in a classroom, but if we can get an interventionist to come in and take a small group of kids, that's going to have a huge impact, and the smaller that group, the better we get that.
So maybe more at that level, or is it a sharing or more to a school building, or?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, and I'll speak just for the Shamrock, but it is hard to find interventionists, because they're part-time.
Right.
So we can afford them because they're part-time. So we can afford them because they're part-time, but not as many people want those jobs. I don't, you know, I, I can speak for some of my colleagues, I know they're having a hard time finding those positions. And also, you know, the, the people taking those positions. You know, you're looking for highly qualified people, and highly qualified people take a full-time job.
I would echo that, and the same with paraprofessionals, even if they are full-time positions, sometimes it's, it's hard to, to find the people that you want to put in the building, working with the students.
Yeah. So I know, you know, just in general, we're kind of looking for some more help with first grade in, in the form of intervention paraprofessionals along those lines.
Like you do with kindergarten with it?
We'd love to see that along with first grade.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowley?
It was similar to what Ms. Chisholm said, that, you know, it would be difficult to do these school improvement plans without the infrastructure that we've developed over the past couple of years. And it seems like the school improvement plans reflect both a vision of the district as a whole, but also they're individually tailored to each school. So I think you just did a great job on these. And the template developed by the curriculum department was, was really awesome. So I think you did a great job. I really appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Doug. Mr. Chisholm, I guess, looking at, I see Ms. Crowley back there, only because I, looking at her cover, she's got a little picture here of a calming corner. I don't know if any principal want to talk about their calming spaces, and I know we had a lot of different equipment developed in the district.
That's what we can do in that corner.
Yeah. Different items, maybe Ms. Ryan, if you tour, any principal can speak to it. Some of those aspects about just got added, kind of what Ms. Chisholm was going about, you know, added features to your buildings, again, social emotional issues that students are having, some of the different spaces you might be developing in your classrooms, converting space to other spaces. If anybody has seen from Ms. Crowley here, maybe others have it as well. I haven't seen it quite as dominant as that picture shows on Earth, but anybody want to talk about what they are thinking in their buildings?
There's been a lot of opportunity for, for these types of spaces and a lot of need, quite frankly, as well. So through the special ed department or the student services department, we've gotten a lot of new material, a lot of it still being set up, to be honest with you. But school adjustment counselors have certainly made, you know, great strides in terms of being able to make sure that when students are in some level of crisis, they have a place that they can go, they can, they can take their time, they can decompress, they can, you know, kind of get, try to get back to a baseline where they can try to get back out into the regular school day so that they can learn again. So it's, it's a important and fundamental part of what we're doing on a daily basis at this point.
And for schools with programs, I know Mr. Casares can speak to this as well, they provide dual use for our gen ed and our special ed kids.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, I want, on behalf, did you want to say something?
Sure. No, I, I, thank you to elementary principals for coming tonight and for putting these school improvement plans together. If you notice, this is a school-wide initiative, so there's teachers and community members and parents that are part of the, the conversation. And so, you know, it's not something that can be easily done, so thank you for the effort and energy to get to this point tonight and appreciate your time. And I, I'm glad Ms. Crowley pointed out that there, you know, we really are trying to create a through line from the district to the schools and connect all of us together. And it sounded in your presentation tonight like that is happening, and so I'm grateful for, for your time.
Thank you all, on behalf of the committee, for coming. Thank you, Ms. Nickerson, Mr. Clark, for taking the last spot. Mr. Clark?
Yeah, note to move our goal to one next year.
Not to be the end speaker, because you're going to get more of the questions, but thank you very much. Wish you best going forward. So thank you, and we look forward to hearing more about student successes over the year. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, yeah, we're going to do that.
Oh, okay.
All right. So I think we can do this all as one group. Yeah. So do I have a motion to approve the elementary school improvement plan?
I'll make that motion, Dr. Wells.
You only have a second? Any discussion on that plan? Okay, motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Carry on. All right.
So we have a data update from Ms. Young. Tonight's update focuses on attendance.
I'm going to thank Jen Judkins for a great deal for her help with this. As we shifted to Power School, we are kind of pulling our attendance data now that we're taking attendance K through 12 through the new system. So I learned a lot when working with her, and I want to give her a shout out because I could not have done it without her. So we're looking at the date range of 9/8/2022 to 12/9 as Friday with an end date. Ms. Ryan was not happy when I told her we're only 34% of our total days, 62 school days, grades K through 12. And if you want to go to the next seven, we're, two different ways, just to make sure that for anyone kind of looking, the bottom part, it goes Alta, Vista, Goodyear, Holman, Linskit, Malcolm White, Reed, Shamrock, Joyce Middle School, Kennedy Middle School, Weber Memorial High School. And these are our total percentages of daily attendance by building level, and then our total attendance by grade level. So all, zero being our kindergarten students, K, 1 up through 12. And as we hit our day 62 mark, we are working right now with principals, as they have been in communication with families who, you know, some of our students who are kind of having some chronic absenteeism, kind of working on setting up individual plans, setting up meetings with families. That's been ongoing, but especially as we're hitting this point in the year, we're really looking at data across the district in terms of the families that might need some additional support.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Chisholm?
Do you know the state average for absenteeism, or is there something that we have to meet in order to get a better grade, or are we not doing so well with these? I mean, we're in the 90s a bit, so, but still, that 1% is tough. And I know that a lot of times in January, February, we lose some students.
Ms. Ryan, you would probably know the percentage better than I do.
I, I don't know what the state average is.
Yeah.
But isn't there, isn't there a mark that we have to hit for our schools being graded?
It's one of the accountability metrics that, that come back.
But I know there was a level that they expected to be a...
100%.
Well, yeah. That's, that's something you could expect.
And so they, and they, with, over the COVID, they've adjusted that a little bit, but they haven't waived it entirely. So it was, there was no accountability assigned this past year, but this, this year, it will come back around. I can get the answer on what the state average is.
But do you, but I think there is like a benchmark that they use for you get, you get points if your students?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
There is, I, I'd have to, I'd have to look for it.
No problem.
Okay, because I think if you could, Nick, Mr. Lipsit, I think, I was just going to say, I think this is something we should just track as a committee, you know, we can do through one of the subcommittees, curriculum, whatever, just so, you know, because it is a benchmark that we meet, and we need to know the benchmark so we can judge this, you know. I don't know, 93 sounds good, but if it, if the thing is 95, then, you know, everybody's not welcome.
My, my understanding, and again, I, I will double check, but I know that we look at absent 10 days or more, and that's when we start to go into the percentage of chronic absenteeism.
Chronic absenteeism.
And that's the factor that I know that is, goes into the, kind of the number of chronic absentee students. I don't know the total percent, but I know that's the percentage I believe that's taken into account. That's why I say that the total number is hard. It really is about looking at specific students and how many students are hitting over a larger number.
So that maybe that's a better data that we need as a committee?
Sure.
Sure.
Mr. Kissel?
One of the things, speaking of that, the 10 days or more, I, we still, I know it was an issue a few years ago where the students would, you know, be taken and maybe go back to their families, you know, in different countries and so on, and they weren't necessarily, they were calling in maybe the first day and not given like a deadline.
We've gotten much better on consistency, and I will say again that Jen Judkins and her department has done a lot in terms of kind of the registration and the releasing and taking off, and they, they look at the numbers. So I would say that we're much better in terms of that calculation, of having students unenroll and re-enroll, which is what we weren't doing.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, this, just to sort of go off, I'm assuming that we've seen these numbers dip over the last month or so. I don't know if you have any sense of how much that is, if that's something, you know, if you wanted to send that along later or after the meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
But it would be interesting to see how, you know, November and December have impacted this number, because I'm guessing it's a fair amount.
I would say the last two weeks alone.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it might be good to get that data, and also, we can bring in the Truman, well, the Truman officers with the, with that data and just talk to them too, because we haven't heard from them in a while.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Okay. All right. Next, the school committee as to approve the superintendent goals. We had a presentation last meeting. You have it before you. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's goals. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we look forward to your updates.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee, Mr. Chisholm?
Yes, we did, you know, December 7th, and I'm here with the Joyce, and then Assistant Superintendent Bob Albinana and Brittany Young, and school board members, but people calling, calling, and myself. Questions were submitted, as we have done in the past, and we get answers from, you know, Dave Douglas and Kathy, who's in the assistant superintendent's office. Warrant one was for $1,674,000, $140. Warrant two was for $98,486,102. Warrant three was for $191,507,34. Warrant four was for $633,722,17. And warrant five was for $116,977,9. And we need a motion to approve.
I have a second.
Second.
And any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And we have the balance of the council, the mayor's saying, motion, please.
Okay.
Approve, balance of the council.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And we discussed the timeline for the 2023-24 budget, and it's up to you here for tonight. We'll bring to full committee to receive budget from February 14, Valentine's Day will be a little longer. Finance will then go over the budget from February 15 to April 25, with the hope to submit the budget to the mayor on April 28. But we'll have a finance meeting, and if anybody can submit those, if anybody has questions, once we get the budget, we can discuss those by groups or whatever we want to do. Assistant Superintendent Young brought us to us a stipend request. This was on trial basis for kindergarten registration. It'll be for one person to do all the kindergarten registration system-wide, hopefully streamline the process as well as assessing students who may need additional services earlier in school year. This position will require working additional hours throughout the summer. It's a $5,000 stipend. The subcommittee voted 3 to 0 to forward it to the full committee for a formal vote.
Okay.
So we'd need a vote to approve that stipend.
So the motion, you're going to make a motion to approve a $5,000 stipend?
May I ask a question first?
You can.
I'll ask it to Ms. Young. I take it that this is heavy lifting, to be able to do all the kindergarten registration?
So it's a combination, so it's a combination of two things. It's one related to registration and two related to coordinating all of our kindergarten screening. In the past, we don't do our screening until late, until the springtime. Our hope is to start, have this person start coordinating screening across the district as early as January. So students who are screened, we can have them be, if we have students who need to be evaluated, we can be evaluating through kind of winter and spring and kind of looking at placement for some of our kindergarten students to ensure, you know, best placement. So it's a combination of that, as well as we're trying to enhance kind of the coordination within our family and community engagement, and this will make it so that there's kind of one point of contact with supporting families and finding ways to coordinate that better.
And we can look at numbers a lot earlier. That is the hope. Great, great job, Ms. Young, Subcommittee. Thank you, Ms. Chisholm.
Mr. Kissel?
Just on that same questioning, it also, I think, it was brought up the meeting, it allows us to kind of, not pre-budget, but closer to the budget, to know if we, there's some major costs that'll be coming in, so.
Thank you.
That'll actually be better than waiting till September.
Thank you for asking questions. Sure.
And we do need to have, we have the rental agreement that...
We got to finish this motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. So you're going, you made a, you're going to make a motion for a $5,000 supplement?
Yeah, stipend to be given out.
Okay, and then we have a second?
Second.
And do we have any other questions on that? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then we, I forgot to have you put on the agenda for the rental, that we have to approve rental of the buildings. So we need to do that at the first meeting in January, so that we can get that done. Go to the letter.
Sounds good. Okay.
We can't do it tonight, correct? Because would you want it to be an agenda item, or does it need to be an agenda item?
I would make it an agenda item in case people want to comment on it.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll look at it.
Okay.
And meeting adjourned at 9:45.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? Okay, moving on to communications Subcommittee, Mr. Lipsit?
Yes. I recall before my time on the committee, former member, Mr. Metters, used to call the Student Services and Achievement Subcommittee the hardest-working Subcommittee, and I'd like to claim that title for the Communications Subcommittee. We have a number of, I've distributed some, some paper to you all this evening, but we met on Friday, December 9th, at 3:30 PM in this room, and attendants were myself, Ms. Crowley, Mr. Morenne, along with Ms. Young and Ms. Ryan. And we took up a couple of issues that have been sort of on, on the agenda, coming back and forth a couple of meetings. The first is a resolution that was brought before us by Ms. Diane Sinta, who I know is in the audience this evening, regarding notification for secure storage for firearms. This is a state law, and the resolution would call on the district to provide notification to families at the discretion of the superintendent, as well as to work with other city officials, including public safety, to notify families of, of this law and to sort of do some education around the importance of, of safe and secure storage for firearms. It, it doesn't escape my notice that today is the 10th anniversary of the Sandy Hook shooting in Sandy Hook, Connecticut. And while mass shootings and, and school shootings unfortunately are a, a fact of our existence right now and get a lot of, of our attention, I think we, we do also need to pay attention to the fact that a lot of young people are, are injured or, or unfortunately killed just in the home through accidental, accidental discharge of, of weapons. And, and this secure storage resolution and then the secure storage law that references, I think are a really important piece to how we prevent that. So we reviewed the resolution, we made a couple of edits, and the Subcommittee did recommend that to the full committee by unanimous vote. So I would like to get a motion to, to have the committee review that.
So moved.
On, just a question to the super, you know, I, the one thing I saw was about the student handbook, and I just want to, I don't know if we need that reviewed by our attorney to make sure it's consistent with what's in a student handbook. to make sure it's consistent with what's in a student handbook. I just don't know what the regulations are about information that can be in a student handbook. And I don't know if the superintendent, that was my, that was my only concern. The other things, you know, are well within the rights of the school committee to do, but the student handbook has some legal implications, and I'm just not sure what that paragraph does or what it means rest legally.
I would, I would actually want to check that with the attorney.
No.
Relative to the student handbook?
Yeah.
Well, we could, one solution is to adopt the resolution and hold that paragraph. Right, but adopt the resolution, but just maybe not publish it yet, until they can publish it in the student handbook.
Okay. Is it fine with you, Mr. Lipsit?
Yeah, I mean, so I will ask for a motion to pass the resolution, but hold that paragraph for legal opinion.
So moved.
Okay. Yes. A motion? Mr. Kissel?
On the motion. On that, the paragraph that says, direct superintendent staff to create an appropriate direct communication. Will we, is it something we should see as well, that piece, or is it, and who would draft that up that--
No, I think it would be like any other, in the direction to the superintendent, he determines what's appropriate. You know, we don't, we direct them to make sure--
Yeah, I mean, the way I'm reading it is you're, you're directing me to draft--
Yeah.
--a commu, you know, a statement to families that I would do and share it with you and the families.
Okay. And this would be not unlike a lot of the material that we do regularly send home in terms of, you know, health issues, safety issues, as well, as my understanding.
Notices.
Notices as well.
Yeah. And probably a silly question, but I'm going to ask it anyways. We're not looking for something coming back from the students, from the parents saying, okay, you know, I'll make sure mine is, which, okay. I mean, that would obviously open it up that the students now know that there is something in the house room. So they won't say, there's no checkoff, so to speak.
Just a notification.
Okay. All right.
We can't prevent it from trying to happen.
Oh, no, I understand. I just don't want to--
Right.
Kid doesn't know it's there, and now he sees the full--
Any other comments, questions?
Maybe, I would, I'm sorry, maybe the proper motion is, motion to approve the resolution, but not publish it in the handbook until we have legal approval.
Okay. Sounds good.
I'll say.
Okay. I'll let Mr., we'll let Mr. Lipsit make the motion, since he's worked on it.
So I will make the motion, I'm going to make this motion a few different times. I'm going to make a motion to, to pass this resolution, but hold on publishing it in the student handbook until we can see legal approval.
Second.
All right. Now we have, any other comments or questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Lipsit.
Thank you all, and I also want to just publicly recognize Ms. Sinta, who's in the audience, for her advocacy and work on this issue, not just on this resolution, but in general.
Okay.
In addition to that, we also reviewed the school committee protocols draft. This is something that I've sent out a couple of different times and received some feedback on. So the committee reviewed it, made a couple of small changes, clarifying the role of the chair in summarizing correspondence into the public record and adding a statement that school committee members will affirm protocols each year at the annual organizational meeting by signing their names below. We passed this as well, or recommended this to the full committee as well by a three to zero vote. So I will ask for a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Do we have any comments or questions?
I just have a question. When we, it says the material, school committee, well in advance.
Yes.
I knew it. I said Pat's going to like that one.
No.
But what, well in advance?
Before the meeting, I think, is, you know, is this current chair is--
Well, I know it's difficult, like, especially if it's ready to get things done and get it to us, but it's so hard to, like, be able to go over this stuff 24 hours.
Yeah. And a lot of this language is modeled on, on existing protocols that are around. I think, you know, our understanding, you know, this, this came out of the workshop that we did with MASC. I know that in that workshop, the, the number of 48 hours was, was tossed around. I didn't really want to put a hard number on this because I don't want to necessarily hold administration to something that might not be workable all the time, but, yeah. But, you know, I don't, I mean, my read on this is that we're not talking about a week here. We're talking about, you know, a couple of days of notice. So I just was done with, with the documentation for this meeting.
It's like years ago, back in the old days. I mean, we'd get a packet on Friday, so that over the weekend, if we had time, so by Monday, if we had questions that need clarification before public meeting, we could get that information at the time, too.
And I'm certainly open to an edit that would clarify that.
I mean, we don't need to, but I'm just asking the question, is there somebody besides me? I know Ellen knows me so well, but that was going to be some of the nightmare.
I, I know, having sat in the chair for this full year. One of the issues is, is that we're getting a lot more presentations. In the past, it was, you know, they'd give us a bunch of material, talking about the way it passed, and, you know, they print it out and then they give it to us. But now people are trying to make the presentations, they're trying to use the utmost recent data, and so it's one of these things where I think that's one of the limiting things, is they're always trying to give us the best data they can when they're doing these presentations, and that's what's driving it sort of towards later part of getting the information out.
And, you know, and Ms. Gustan Hoven came tonight and had a great presentation, you know, and I, obviously, I'm going back and forth with her last week, and she had a draft, but she doesn't want to give you a draft and then have it change radically between, you know, if it's given too soon. So that was--
I really think with the important things, you know, I think what we want to really strive for, things that we know are going to require votes.
Well, the school improvement, the school improvement plan, as an example, you know, right.
Might I suggest, then, that we simply add the word substantive before changes? Just to sort of clarify that, you know, I mean, edits, edits to a, to a Google Slides presentation, adding a photo here and there, that's, that's not substantive. Things that we may have to deliberate on, take action on, that would be substantive. I will edit as such.
Good job.
Like, if we're taking something to give a $5,000 stipend, we should get that beforehand?
Oh, snap.
I'm only--
Hey, that's not working.
That's a parting gift.
I don't want any time for everybody asking me questions.
Anyways, but no, I think, you know, that's the thing we should keep in mind and administration keep in mind. If you're asking us for a vote, get us the information as soon as you can. Otherwise, you know, we'll do the best we can to get it so the committee can look at it. Okay. So we have the motion to approve this as modified. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. And so on the organizational meeting in January, we can all be prepared to sign.
I just want to mention that Andrew Lipsit did this basically on his own, and he did a great job, and he put a lot of work into it, a lot of thought and everything, so.
I just want to clarify, this was a committee effort. I did some of the writing. I don't want this to seem like I ran off and wrote a document and shoved it onto the board.
No, I think, I think what we're thanking you for is helping us with the, the meeting we had with the MASC, and that was really the impetus for this, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for communications? A moving rate along, Curriculum and Data Trends Subcommittee, Mr. Mulrennan.
We have not met, although Ms. Young, if you can refresh my memory, the end of Mr. Lipsit's meeting, we had a highlight of something. I can't remember, I know Ms. Gustan Hoven was here about the stand and steam, but I forget. The highlight of the moving district.
A is R, isn't it?
We talked about the pre-ticket sales of the Anastasia, and we talked about the Shamrock School and their exceptional foundations work.
Okay.
I had it in my notes, and somehow I couldn't make it into minutes, so thank you for that. I will amend the minutes for the public.
And so just to keep it going for the next year, we did have a presentation via Citizen about, you know, what's needed to, you know, help with the scores by one of our former teachers. So maybe curriculum going into the next year can maybe look at that, because we do owe the person, getting back to them. Okay. Any other questions or comments for curriculum? All right, moving on to Personnel Subcommittee.
We have not met.
Okay. That's always a good thing, because that means they're not hiring outside the budget. So I think that reflects well on the administration.
No personnel issues.
Nice job, Tommy. I did my best.
Not available.
Resources, Capital and Planning Subcommittee.
Yes, we did meet November 21st, 9:30 AM, Joyce Conference Room. Present was David Dunkley, Bob Alcarada, Jim Duran, Patty McKinnon, Ellen Crowley, Colleen Cormier, and myself. Talk was about the possibility, which came up at, by Citizens' participation, a regular meeting before that, possibility of a snack shack at the high school near the high school football field. Resident Maria Della--
Delagrati.
That's right, Della. Delagrati came forward to discuss and get some info on what's involved. Jim Duran and Dave Dunkley have some info from past study, which you should have gotten. Unfortunately, there's no numbers, because they didn't get a, a response back from the company, but they did have the plans and what it might look like. Dave had also said Rich Hagerty was looking at the permits, and he had filed legislation to suspend some of the state building codes for the bathroom portion of the project. It is not, talking to him, it is not gaining much ground in the House. He is going to reopen that, and he gets by January 15th is when they can file again, and he wants to tighten it up a little bit and put something through. More details will be needed to see if capital monies, friends of, or the regular school budget would be possible. For the friends of possibility, if I, if I got it right, Bob, would need the money in an account. I mean, we can't say we're going to do the project and then do fundraising. It has to be there?
Right. In order for us to go out to bid under the procurement laws, and this would be Chapter 149, public construction, we wouldn't be able to go out to bid unless we essentially had the appropriation. So all of the monies would have to be raised in order for the bid--
That's if it was friends of or a portion of. We have to make sure we have it. All right. Friends of, or the regular school budget, depending if we decided to go that route, would be possible. Friends of possibility would need the money, and they kind of said that. The vote was three to zero to bring it to a full committee as an action item. Basically, what I guess we're looking to have is Dave and Jim to look a little more into it. With the drawings, if you saw them, I think there might be, and I apologize, I don't know if I sent it to Gene, that the interior, these are the exterior views. Obviously, you've got the, the counter space, nice little family walking by, and then the building itself.
They're supposed to be stopping, not walking by.
So it's, the other sheet which I have is the internal piece, which is actually, you know, where the money is, because it has to be AVA compliant. It looked like there was three women's bathrooms, two men's ba, I don't know, one men's bathroom, and then stainless steel kitchen, you know, and so on and so forth. So there's a lot more to it to be looked at money-wise. I know Jim had said the last time they had kind of looked at this, this plan here, it was about $150,000. I don't know if anyone recalls when it was.
Yeah, that must have been a long time ago.
A long time ago.
Yeah. So about $150,000. Dave had said it's going to be well over 200 now, just in the cost, the increases over the years. Not saying that's, that's a deterrent as much as just, that's probably what we're looking at, you know, at least two, two to 250, to keep that same structure, which I'm assuming was, you know, compliant for all the issues and things we would need to do, as opposed to just smaller. You look, you have a question?
No, I'm trying to figure out how I'm going to phrase what your motion's going to be.
Oh, okay.
Is it for Jim and Dave to move forward?
Yeah.
Well, no, what I'm thinking is really to work with the high school principal and their school council to see, you know, the desire of them to, going forward, is this something they want to work on and set up a friends organization, maybe, and they can bring in Mr. Duran and other parties as needed. But really, I think it's got to be a grassroots effort from the high school to do this.
Because we'd also need to know how much they need to raise.
Right. Well, that's, but I'm thinking, you know, you know--
You know 300 anyway.
Yeah. To see what the grassroots desire is to do it up there.
Yeah.
And then, you know, they need more, you know, help from us, then they can come to us and so forth. But I think, you know, unless there's a strong desire, because it's going to need people to man it and things like that. So I think maybe working with the high school principal, and he can call in people as needed to start a, you know, assessment of the desire and the need at the high school to do this.
And one of the other things in, would be more the finance piece of it, and I think you'll be working on that, is the, the labor force, not just the people manning, manning it or, you know, being inside, but also the editorial staff, because it's out of the realm of the normal--
Right.
--three-hour, you know, cleanup of, of the school, and, you know, the football game's over, the practice and so on. I mean, the other, the other sports. So that would be something to consider as well. You know, they'd be outside, they're normal, so it might be an extra person.
And maybe one of the sports support groups might be interested in taking a lead on this, and, you know, then, then they can approach us, I think.
Okay. But so the, yeah, so we voted three to zero to bring it in as an action item, so.
So the motion would be to present it to the high school principal, and he can, you know--
It's almost like we want to conduct a mini feasibility study on the building of the snack shack at the high school.
Desire to do. We're not even at the feasibility--
To give a vision.
Yeah. Is this something that they think at the high school, which is something that would add to the high school?
So the superintendent would present this to the principal?
Well, we would send him an email saying, you know, here's, it's not parents, somebody has come before us and told us about this need, you know, can he talk to Mr. Duran and, you know, the other support that would be needed at the high school to see whether this is something that they want to go forward with.
Okay. So--
That's the motion. Yep.
Just one motion, though.
Can we do a--
Second.
Yeah, I'm done motioning. But one of my questions is, I just don't want to waste a lot of time if this is not going to get the approval of the State House.
Right.
Because we, this has been tried before, and because we still have that pending suit against us, not having 72 bathrooms outside. So I just don't want to have everybody waste a lot of time only to find out we still can't build it.
Well, I think the idea is to find out how much support there is at the high school level. If there's not a ground, you know, support there, then why have our representative waste their time?
Right. But I also don't want, you know, everybody to get their hopes up and then find out it sits there for the next three years. So it's kind of like, but keep rich in the loop, is what I'm--
Yeah, I, I, I'll reach out, because I talked to him.
Okay.
Is that still an emotion, or we didn't do the motion?
We have a motion. We had a second.
On the motion?
On the motion.
Long as the same lives as Ms. Chisholm, Mr. Chairman, and good work by this club committee. Again, going back many, many years ago, that's what it comes down to, the state building code and the whole stadium issue of the facilities up there. So I think the concern of Ms. Chisholm, it echoed by myself as well, that step one has part of this motion would be, after the first of the year, I guess Rep. Hagerty's waiting to January. In our January sessions begin, just to have the school committee, along with the superintendent, go ahead and draft a letter, you know, endorse Rep. Hagerty to do what he has to do at the state level, so that at least he has a little backing from us. You know, obviously--
All right.
Donkey calling him would be fine.
Okay, that'll be a second motion.
All right. I remember to this motion, if you want to do it.
Oh, do a second.
Second.
Nothing I like better than calling votes. Okay, so we have the first motion to present it to the high school principal for further clarification and elaboration. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we have Mr. Mulrennan's motion to send a letter to Representative Hagerty to ensure that he knows that we have this, we are supporting his efforts to resolve this issue with state guidelines.
Second.
Okay. All, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Good.
And then, Mr. Kissel.
Anything else from Resources?
There's a couple more things.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. All right, we had, feasibility study is well underway. Dave Dunkley said that they are on, pretty much at the December 2022 on-time portion of the timeline. Still shooting for the end of the school year 2023 for completion. Ellen suggested putting together--
This is a pattern here.
--a small Subcommittee of Stakeholders to, to--
You mentioned something.
I don't remember either, but--
No, you did.
I remember.
Yeah, all right, there you go. To help make some decisions on, on the, of different projects and so on.
Oh, yeah.
You were daydreaming, but that's what I'm trying to say. But once we had all the plans, you wanted a group of people to be looking at it and helping make the decision.
Right. I thought that was the resource Subcommittee's responsibility, but I don't know.
So, and proposal of the turf practice field was touched upon. I kind of forget what we said on that, because my notes got a little messy at the end. $300,000?
The, the estimate for the purchase of the, the turf would be $300,000.
Oh, hey, I had it right.
All right. But there's no motion to do anything with that yet, right?
It was just a--
Yeah, because that's a little higher than 5,000, not on the agenda, so I figured that wasn't a vote tonight.
Maybe we could have a friends of turf.
So we'll get--
Friends of unofficial turf.
So I assume that's going to, that's going to be a budgetary item, or--
Part of this project is actually going to be paid for by capital funds from City Hall. So this $300,000 can be ordered once the estimated quarter is finalized. We can run that right through City Hall, capital funds.
Okay. So once you get the final thing, then you want to vote from the committee to do this? Just endorse it, I guess, is probably--
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Once we get that, then we'll put that on the agenda for a vote. Okay.
And readjourn to 10:20?
Okay. And with regard to the feasibility study--
Oh, sorry.
I think, you know, the idea would be, it would be finished, presented to the resource, then to the full board, and then I do agree, you know, once we see that, then there's, then we need to talk to other stakeholders to get support for the, whatever projects come out of it. But I think first we got to look through it. Okay. Good. Any questions for Resource? Okay. Student Services and Achievements Subcommittee.
Yes, we met for five hours. Hang on. Just kidding. We did not meet. We had a half a minute.
I was going to say, I don't remember that.
I wanted to trick you all to think I was going to give minutes for five hours.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Student Services and Achievements?
Yes.
And just to remind, we do want to have the CPAC for the committee sometime in the next year, you know. I just, what, you know, when, you know, they were concerned that they wanted to come before the committee, we've tried to work the schedules out, but they just haven't worked out for everybody. But we do want to keep that, you know, as out for everybody, but we do want to keep that, you know, as an option for them coming forward. Okay, thank you. Correspondents, any correspondents?
I just, I, I would like to send a correspondence to Noah Thomas and Jesse Thomas on the Korean success of Anastasia, I'm sure someone's going to make that motion, but that, this was tremendous, and he, through the student rep, gave us a statement on it, but I think it was a tremendous success for Weber, and I think we should send a letter.
We'll make a motion that we send a letter to.
To Fin Arts Department.
Arts Department.
I will second that motion.
Okay.
I mean, at the discretion of the Superintendent, whoever you think would be the proponent of the.
I think, I think it should include the coordinator for Fin Arts.
Yeah, Mr. Gobertie.
Yeah, all, all those people.
I don't want to, I don't want to just name people without naming all of them.
Right, there are a few other folks involved, so.
Everyone, thank you.
And I think all the committee members got it, I did get a correspondence from Mr. Genova regarding the teacher's contract, and I responded on behalf of the committee. I don't think, I don't know if I sent that to you yet, I will forward that to you in my response.
I just also wanted to let the committee know that for the month of January, I will be away, so I will not be present for our meetings.
Okay.
Besides the organizational meeting.
All right, well, you're doing God's work over in Africa.
Every day.